Good evening. I would like to welcome you to the proceedings of the Grand Rapids Public Schools Board of Education. It is Monday, August 21st. Will you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Shakke, can you please take the attendance?
I would love to. Ms. Slade.
Present.
Dr. Baker is excused. Dr. Flores?
Present.
Ms. Grant?
Here.
Ms. Lewis?
Present.
Reverend Mathias?
Present.
Mr. Ross?
Present.
Ms. Shakke here, President Fahl.
Present. Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Don't move.
Or?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Thank you. Next on the agenda is celebrations.
Dr. Fahl, members of the board, I would like to ask John Hemholt to come forward, please.
Mike, do you want to join me up here? Really? Yes, sir. Can't get out of it that easy. Madam Superintendent, President Fahl, members of the board, it's a pleasure to be here with you again, bringing our friend Mike Franz and his colleagues to once again bring before you the Peace Education Week Resolution, something we celebrate every year. This year, we're looking at the week of September 18th through the 25th, with the United Nations International Day of Peace being on Thursday, September 25th. With me here is Mike to share a little bit more about that.
Thank you very much. Wow. Superintendent Neal, Board of Education, distinguished members. Could I ask Pat?
Katie, why don't you come up a little bit further on the first seat? Take the first seat.
Thank you. This is always a special occasion for the Institute for Global Education. I come here each year to compliment you and thank you for approving another year of peace education in public schools, and to remind you that you have the longest-standing resolution ongoing in the United States. This will be our 34th year together. The very first year Katie and I stood in the wings as the first resolution, very similar to the one you're passing tonight, was read to the board in the spring of, May of 1984. Do you remember that, Katie? And since then, it's been now 34 years, if you do the math the way I do it. We've been consistent and persistent, and I'm proud to present another program this year in our ongoing efforts to bring peace into our communities and into our world, okay? I draw your attention to the resolution itself, which we don't often read, and I'm not going to attempt to read it to you, but I hope you have read it, or will. "Whereas a world without war is in the best interest of all humanity." I'm going to pause there for a moment. My banker reminded me today, we've got to lock in that interest loan by the 31st. If there's war with Korea, we don't know where those rates are going. I said, yeah, I understand. So, we're sitting on the cusp of a new possible war, which is preventable. We need to talk. We need to talk, hard talk. And I can't remember a time since we introduced our first resolution in 1984 that the United States hasn't been at war. There's been continuous conflicts and wars, not just in the world, but yes, there have been in the world, and there've been people fleeing those conflicts, immigrants, by the millions. Some of them we've accepted, some of them we've turned away. What is the proper role of the United States in these conflicts? And should our students be involved in those discussions? We would challenge you to make that a reality. If you look at the cover page for the Week of Peace Education, we're talking about bringing peace art activities, discussions about race, learning about people and cultures around the world, all kinds of opportunities for learning for our students. This program guide, which is accompanied by two pages this year of age-appropriate material for both elementary and middle school and high school, okay? You can use this program guide, and teachers should be encouraged to do so. I was sitting this summer at another public meeting with one of the distinguished principals of one of our middle schools, and she says, "I always introduce this to my staff, but I direct the social studies people," you know, "to carry out some program." And I said, "Yes, but you're missing a lot of opportunities. Language arts, music, phys ed, all areas of disciplines can be involved." And we've given you activities to suggest that students can, you know, perform in these areas. And finally, the community activities planned for this week do include appropriate activities that are going to begin on Sunday, September 17th. Katie Villar has planned a program of interfaith dialogue in which there will be a presence of Joe Jones of the City Commission, and Joe is going to read the mayor's proclamation for this week, which is, you know, a parallel to what you're doing. And then we will be addressed by eight local people in the areas of interfaith and their beliefs in peace and how they teach it to their people. And especially, as always, the children. Thursday, we've repaired, because of the recent events in the world, we're going to be dealing with Dr. Michael Lean Kelly, a distinguished professor from McQuinnes College, speaking on just war. And her basic theory is that there is no such thing as just war, which suits us just fine, okay? And there will be an opportunity for discussion and an answer by John Koch, who's a representative in the veterans area and has dealt with Veterans for Peace. That activity will be live taped and will be broadcast. As this will be broadcast, I think we need to get the word out to the community. And it's the independent media that's going to carry the ball. The regular media doesn't pay any attention. And then Friday, Friday, the 50 Years of Young Lords. You wouldn't believe, when the Young Lords first appeared on the scene, they were the Latino version of the Black Resistance back in the days of the riots, and they've become a very peaceful organization. And they're willing now to come out. They've got a program at the Wealthy Street Annex here, and they're going to be talking about empowering communities in ways that are peaceful and, you know, for everyone. So, we're very proud that, you know, all of this has happened. And also, I'm going to make just short mention of the recent events in Charlottesville, which seem to underscore the importance of our realizing our history and the history of racism that has persisted in this country to the present day and is showing its ugly face once again and needs to be put back in its place. And those Confederate statues have always showed up at times of great Ku Klux Klan activity and so forth, and it's inconceivable that we can support those statues and still support a United States of America that believes in liberty and equality and for all. And I'm going to wrap this up with an opportunity for Katie to say a few things about her years as an educator.
Hi, I'm Katie Villar, and I'm a teacher too, like Mike, and I retired, kind of retired from the community college, but I am still teaching GED, and I work with the Literacy Center as well. I know in planning the program for interfaith that all philosophical traditions and faith traditions value peace and conflict resolution. And that's on the international level and the community level and individual, personal level. And we just need to remind ourselves of this all the time, because we're just forgetting that. We're forgetting that, that respect, that we all owe every other person on the planet. And so, the International Day of Peace on the 21st of September is a worldwide day of commemoration of peace and really supposed to be an inspiration for us to, again, think about how we can better promote peace among countries, among all peoples' cultures, and so on. And so, we don't want to lose sight of that. We think it's really important in Grand Rapids, and we want reminders, and we're hoping that these activities will be reminders. They are just reflecting activities that are held in many cities throughout the world.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. We do not, as yet, have a student representative to the board. Do we have any public comment on board agenda items?
We do not.
Secretaries report.
All right, just a few things this evening. Board members, we have a few committee meetings coming up and a cancellation. So, first, the Academic Achievement Committee was canceled for the month of August. The next meeting will be Tuesday, September 19 at 9:00 a.m. here in the auditorium. The Finance Committee is scheduled next week, Monday, August 28 at 4:00 p.m. here in the auditorium, and the Ad Hoc Policy Committee will meet on Tuesday, September 5 at 5:00 p.m. in Room 101. Lastly, please join us on Wednesday, this Wednesday, August 23rd at 5:00 p.m. for the Ridgemore Park Montessori ribbon cutting. The address is 2555 Ivorness Street Southeast. Public is welcome to join us for this celebration with Superintendent Neal, board members, and staff from the Grand Rapids Public Schools. So, please share in this excitement of opening up our new school program. Thank you.
Great. We have no committee chair update, so superintendents report.
Thank you, Dr. Fahl. And members of the board, I would ask John Hemholt to come forward, please.
It is that time of year again. Back to school's a week away from today, and we are in full-blown campaign mode to raise awareness and to really turn out the word that August 28th is the start of school. This is a big change. It's a week before when we normally do this, and we know that in the years past, when we've had an alternative calendar, we've had struggles in getting that full attendance that first week, in fact, first couple of weeks. And so, we have an aggressive advertising campaign. It's paid advertising, that's the "Don't Be Late on August 28th." Automated calls, social media, text messages, flyers, and mailers home. We'll be doing live interviews on pretty much all the radio stations, so you're going to see a big push here over the course of the next week, including, we may, we're also looking at possibly doing a public safety press conference, something like we did a year ago, just to remind those parents of those back-to-school safety tips and to, again, hammer down that the first day of school is Monday, August 28. So, spread the word on social media, help us get it out.
Thank you.
Dr. Fahl, I'd ask Larry Johnson to come forward on the back-to-school safety, please.
Good evening, Dr. Fahl, Superintendent Neal, and remaining board members. As John stated, we're less than a week from opening our schools, and we're excited. Over the summer, we've had an opportunity to work with the Grand Rapids Police Department and looking at the crossing guard positions and stations for our children as they begin to cross, attempting to add some slots where we think pedestrian traffic with young people has picked up and hope that we can provide some services as those kids cross the street. I've had no less than 10 meetings with Dean's Transportation about professionalism and courtesy with our young people and our families, how they transport our kids, even looking at their bus stops and making sure they're in good, visible locations where young people are safe as they come to school. So, as we move forward, we just want to, again, to communicate to our parents about young people walking to school and encouraging those kids who are walking for the first time, that parents maybe walk with them even before school starts, so they learn the routes and not the shortcuts and cutting the alleys or in the middle of the block. We are encouraging our bike riders, those kids who ride bikes, to ride with helmets and obey the rules of the road, so they don't become injured while traveling from school. We understand this is an exciting time for many of our young people to come to school, but an exciting time also for some of our teen drivers, because this will be the first time that many of them will be driving to school. So, we will work with them, once they're here, to start going over some of the do's and don'ts about driving to school and hope that we can prevent anything from occurring as they do that. Again, one of our biggest challenges over the years have been, has been around the loading and unloading of buses with our young kids and not getting kids lost or placed on the wrong bus. We have a process in place to track young people. If everyone follows that process, we should not lose any kids anywhere. It will be a challenge over the first few days, as many of the new drivers learn routes and get kids in and out of buses and get them safely home. So, we're excited about the opening of school. We think continuing to do our work with the Grand Rapids Police, they plan to come out and do their schools' open slowdown campaign, and we will encourage them to do that, and we'll even suggest some of the locations of where that should occur, as well as the really enforcing the flashing red light on the bus and stopping to allow those kids to cross the street before those cars come through. So, just less than a week, our team is up, we're ready, and we're excited about school starting, so.
Mr. Johnson. Jamelle and team. And Jamelle is going to talk about our new online process that we have for enrollment.
Good evening. First of all, thank you for this opportunity to share the enrollment process this year. By far, the highlight has been the launch of our new online registration process, which gives parents the opportunity to enroll their kids via web. We've deployed the online process at our building orientations this year, and at orientations, our parents were encouraged to use our computer labs, in which we have setups in each school. Various central office staff was trained and provided assistance to parents as they enroll their kids. We made paper applications available for parents that weren't comfortable with computers. And to my surprise, I shouldn't say to my surprise, most of the parents chose the online route, because there was a major incentive with that. The major incentive was they were allowed to register all their kids at once, so as they log into the portal, they can see all the kids that they needed registered, no matter what the building they were at. And Kurt will demonstrate that more a little bit later. And then also, another incentive for staff was they were, they're not forced to data enter the information later. It's all upfront, so this should cut down the work and allow secretaries and building staff to do other things. Some of the statistical outcomes as of last Thursday for launching the online feature were we provided online registration at 17 buildings thus far. As of last Thursday, we've registered 3,600 students. No students were registered this time last year, so that's a big... 26% of our parents activated their pay-per-view accounts. Last year, 2%, so that's an increase of 24%. At least 21,000 pieces of paper, 42 reams, more than half cases of paper has been saved as a result of implementing the online feature. The online registration...
Dr. Randall's all happy wherever she's at.
Sure to include that one. The online feature seems to be better identifying students in need of special services such as ELL, Special Education, Health. Parents are being more intentional as they read through the questions and providing more detailed information regarding these areas. And also, parents are also providing information about their younger members as well, which will help us forecast and recruit students a little bit better. Some of our future outcomes that we're going to be looking forward to is we hope to deploy more user-friendly mobile app. We noticed that all parents came in with mobile phones, so we hope to, we launch that a little bit better. We have it right now, but it's some bugs into it right now we have to fix. And then, too, we hope to make available to parents registering their kid earlier. It's my thought that, or our thought, that if we get parents to register sooner, then they will commit to us and we won't have to worry about losing them, and that should improve retention in the future. So, I'll turn things over to Kurt. He will, I don't know if you can see that.
I just have a quick question. Is that available for high school students as well?
All students.
All students, okay.
Nice little video, too.
And do students have to register every year, or do you assume they're coming back, or?
We assume they're coming back. Good evening. We assume they're coming back, but we ask them to go through their information just to verify that it's correct. We, as I show you in a minute, we want to make sure the emergency information is accurate so that we can reach out to parents if we need to in case of an emergency. So, when parents come to our online system, it's the same page for both parents and students, so students can access the site and so can parents. Later on in the year, parents will use it to access student grades from the teacher's grade books, homework assignments, there's calendars out there for teachers to share information with students. So, parents click on the link, and then they can log in, or we give them an activation key for their account. And when they log in, it shows all of their children that they have registered with the district in there, and it shows their picture. Just seeing the parents' faces light up when they see their kids' pictures on the screen is...
Isn't that a little young for high school, isn't it?
Yeah. This is my sample student.
You've got to start early.
So, as they log in, they'll come over here to our registration information area right now, and then we have two links. The household supplemental form is where we're collecting all of our information for our Title I services and support that we offer our students throughout the year to make sure we can collect that information. And then they click on our registration verification, which is where they'll go through the information that we currently have for our students on the student information system. It walks them through page by page and allows them to view their address. It uses Google Maps to verify their address. If their address is a valid address within the district, it gives them a green check mark. If it doesn't come up as a valid address or there's an issue with the address, it gives them a little exclamation point, and we have to then solve what the problem is as we walk through it. We then go through all of the parent guardian information. It tells us when we have a complete set of information on that parent. If it's missing anything, it'll say "in progress," and they can click in that area, and it takes them directly to where the problem is or what we're missing. All of their emergency contact information is out here. Again, we ask them to review their emergency contacts on an annual basis, just so we know we've got the most current and most accurate information as phone numbers change. It allows them to view all of the students that they've got enrolled with the district. And again, as I said, if there's something missing, they can click in the area, and it takes them directly to the area where something's missing, and it tells them what is missing. They can then select from the dropdown what they want, and then save and continue. It walks them through all the different parts, identifying who has what rights. They can move their emergency contacts, they can move them around in whatever order they want us to call them in. Identifying special education services, if they have special education services in the past, they can say yes, and the system drills down more as they answer the questions. The system does allow for school selection, and it gives them a map, so it shows all of the open schools that are available. And parents that fill out the information at home have the ability to upload documents that we need for registration, such as the student's birth certificate and that type of stuff. So, they can choose if they'll deliver the copy to the school, or they can choose to file to upload it themselves. Once they've gone through all of the steps, they choose to review the information. Once they click the review button, it brings everything up, and everything that they've made a change to is in yellow. Our secretaries see the same screen when they're reviewing the information that the parents have entered. So, any changes to the system will show up in yellow for our secretaries, and it will tell us what the previous value was, if there was any, or if it's a brand-new entry and who made the change. Once they're done, they click the submit button. It goes into a queue based on the answers they've given, so if it's one of our choice schools or our theme schools, it goes to the Student Services Department for them to deal with. Otherwise, it goes to the school secretary, and the school secretary reviews it and accepts the changes. It loads directly into our student system without having the secretaries having to key the information in.
Nice.
I am curious. I'm assuming this is, is it just active during enrollment time, or obviously during the year, if a parent wants to update something, I guess they have access throughout?
They'll have access throughout the year to make changes. The secretaries, if a parent goes in and makes a change, the secretary will get a notification on their home screen of the student system when they log in, telling them that there's a change made and that they need to go out and review.
Are there language toggle?
Yes. At the very bottom of the parent's screen, we have several different languages that they can choose from, so we have English, Spanish, Arabic, French, and Kenyanian available. We're going to be opening up our 17, our 1718? Eight... 1819, thank you. 1819 theme school application, the first day of school in here, so parents will be filling out theme school applications for the following school year, starting the first day of school. So, that will be open all school year until the end of the deadline.
That's great. Yeah, it's great.
What does this do for, I mean, typically, on the first day of school, it was lines and papers of things. Are the schools planning more, better orientations, walkthroughs, and things like that?
The first year, you know, was kind of, you know, trial and error, we're kind of working through bugs. I'm noticing a progression, improvement each day. So, as each day goes on, we learn something more. Kurt is always making modifications in cases that he didn't see that a click did this, did that. So, we're seeing that parents are pretty happy with the process. It takes about 20 minutes, max, to do it. Again, this is really replacing a process that's really, was really antiquated, and the secretaries, you know, started the school year with packs of forms that they wouldn't get entered until later, later in the year, so we're really excited about this.
Remember, a process was always validating your address? I remember bringing a utility bill in, so does this do that automatically?
There's still state law that we have to get that initially, but once it's done, then we don't have to do it every year.
And I saw the language options on the bottom.
That's great.
So, are there more languages than that available, or?
There are. There's multiple languages that we can add to it, so as we progress and add more, we'll add more languages out there.
That's great. Awesome.
Good job, you guys.
Great.
Great job.
Great news.
And one last report. Dr. Fahl, I would ask Kurt Johnson to come forward, please.
President Dr. Fahl, Brother O'Neill, and distinguished board members, good evening.
Evening.
We trust that your eyesight is all intact after the eclipse, but pretty exciting. We stopped our staff meeting three times to run outside to...
That's right.
To be in the moment, so we're really excited to be able to witness that. But welcome to the first student activity of the school year, and based on the football schedule, you know, the opening game can always vary different, and so this year, it's a little different, and we have a doubleheader of a different kind. And Union High School Red Hawks present West Side Pride, season opener, Family of Schools' Back-to-School Bash, all in one. So, on Thursday, August 24th, at our historic Housman Field, will be Union High School's OK Black Conference Champions, Black Conference Champions, Boys varsity soccer team taking on the Bengals of Ottawa Hills. And then that will be followed by Union's Boys varsity football team taking on Whalen at 7:00 p.m. So, this is a Union, Red Hawk, Family of Schools event, and we want every Red Hawk...
That's great.
...from kindergarten to 12th grade, every principal, every staff member, every parent, every neighbor and friend to all be out there and come out for a festive event as we kick off the school year. And then we're hoping that being in the school environment, seeing friends and staff members will remind everybody that school starts a week from now on next Monday, and don't be late for August 28. So, what a great time to promote that again. So, the season opener is always our first and free event of the school year, but however, you have to get... But however, you have to get tickets in advance. And you can do that by going online at GRPS.org backslash athletics hyphen union. And that will lead you to Eventbrite, where you can print your own tickets right at home. Or you can stop by your school building and ask your principal if you are in the Union Family of Schools. Or you can stop by Union High School at the athletic office and see Mr. Walker there. And you can secure tickets that way as well. So there will be prize giveaways. There will be school spirit-free items. There will be halftime and quarter games. There will be a Kid Zone with inflatables. So come one and come all. And we hope to see you there. But also, this year again is our 25th anniversary for the Thanksgiving Day Run. So we would like to remind folks that registration is open, and this is our Summer of Thanksgiving. So the earlier you register, you can encounter those promotional rates. Thank you.
Okay. We have no action items. Next on our agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Please take the vote.
Ms. Layden?
Yes.
Dr. Baker is excused. Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Matias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaq, yes, President Faub?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And with that, we have the adoption of our peace resolution for the 35th year in a row, correct?
Yes.
No discussion items. Do we have public comment for non-agenda items?
We do not.
Okay. Superintendent's comments.
Dr. Faub, I would like to just remind parents, with school starting, anyone that may need assistance with purchasing uniforms, to please contact your principal. We do not want any of our parents to keep our students home because of that. We are able to provide assistance, so please come.
Mr. Ross?
I guess I want to thank Mr. France and friends for, you know, just your commitment to this over the years. It's inspiring and borderline emotional if you really sit and think about it. So really appreciate that commitment. Also, Mr. Johnson, just regarding the Dean Transportation and frankly, you know, holding them accountable to a greater spirit of courtesy for the thousands of young people that, you know, we want to have some peace for. You know, I think we definitely want to hold them more accountable to taking good care of our young people, so definitely appreciate that. And probably, in almost a nerdy sort of way, the most exciting thing was that news that Mr. Embry and Mr. Barnum brought. I mean, that was really, seems like really an efficient way to do business, and that's appreciated for sure. So thank you.
Dr. Flores?
Well, first of all, I'd like to reflect on having lost my favorite teacher last week, Mrs. Robinson, a former teacher of the Grand Rapids Public Schools, who I think gave a great measure of support to this. And then another passing of Dick Gregory, who's a great historian and comedian. Just to note those things along the way that I think are important. Let's give peace a chance, definitely. Hopefully, we'll stay out of war and conflict. So thank you.
Yes, I'd like to thank Mr. France and his committee for bringing this resolution to us, especially at this time and considering the kinds of things that have happened in our country in the last week or so. And I think, too, that it only seeks and shows the importance of the Grand Rapids Public School Board and the Grand Rapids Schools in their commitment to studying really the impact of race and social justice on how it affects our kids in the classroom. And so I think this all ties in perfectly, and I thank you very much.
No comment.
Reverend Matias?
Yeah, I had an opportunity to go to the back-to-school last Thursday, and it was really exciting to see a ton of people there. Staff excited, the community excited. It seemed like there were a lot of partners out there helping our community. And so it was just exciting to be able to talk to folks and acknowledge the work that the district is doing. Ms. Evans showed me the new online screen activity that our kids were doing. And, I mean, I just saw from the smallest to our high schoolers really messing around with the technology. It was really exciting to see them. So I think this year is going to be awesome with those kinds of things. So thanks for your hard work and our teachers and principals, met some new principals as well, and that was exciting, too. Thank you.
Ms. Shaq?
Well, sure, I just want to validate, as a parent who just went through the online enrollment process, how amazing it was. It was so easy, and I can't tell you how excited I was about being able to reorganize my emergency contacts. That was, it's the little things as parents that really make your day and help you be more efficient at home, which is really important to me, and of course, more efficient and productive in our schools. So thank you for your work there. And I just want to say what an honor it is for me to be able to sign the resolution today as a secretary of the Board of Education. So thank you for your commitment to our children and for teaching peace and for not letting there be room for hate in our schools and our city. Thank you.
Ms. Grant?
Yes, I feel like I'm echoing what everyone has said this evening. As a parent, I am really, really excited about the program. We used it last year at CA Frost for the grades, and that was an awesome thing to be able to just sign on and see where your child is and communicate with the educators. So I'm really excited for us to implement that on a wider level. And then also, for the Week of Peace, I think it's just an amazing conversation to include our students in right now so that they can see that what happens in the classroom is also connected to what's happening in the world around them because they do see it and feel it, they understand it. So I'm excited to have them included in that conversation. Thank you.
I'll just reiterate what the rest of the boards had regarding the resolution, and it's a beautiful resolution. Its language and values are deep and solid, and I thank you for your leadership on it. And don't be late on August 28. So that's all.
Jern? What's that? Meaning a jern? Oh, meaning a jern.